Mr. Deliva, thank you for being here with us.
My pleasure.
Paul Tuchel, Victor Davila. I think I'm gonna have some members of this committee that's gonna join us. They did not call me to say they were not coming, so hopefully we can have them come in. We're gonna wait a couple minutes. We can hold tight, have this discussion. I have a person with a number 413-523-3223. If you can tell us who you are. And then we have Lisa Cronella, I believe. I apologize if I said that right. I want to get that right. I apologize.
The phone number is me, Adam. It's Mike Fenton.
Oh, I know. Look, that's your office number, isn't it? Because it looked familiar. Thank you. Thank you for being here. So I do have a member of the committee here with us. Thank you. We have joined by Michael Fenton. Who else? We have Tracy Whitfield here. We have Jesse Letterman here. We have also some Marcus Williams. So we have our quorum. Good. We have our members of the committee. I can get this started. He's joining at the moment. All right. So we have Counselor Marcus Williams here. Make sure. Marcus, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. Fantastic. It is 3:31. I want to make sure that we staying good on time. Meeting is scheduled for 3:30. This is an economic development meeting on a discussion of the Basketball Hall of Fame induction ceremony or the enshrinement being moved into another location for one year. Couple of my colleagues and also some committee members were asking some of us if we knew kind of anything else other than what was reported. I had a great discussion beginning of the week with Mr. John Deliva before this meeting. But moving forward, I want to have everybody get a chance to introduce themselves who's here. So I know I had invited the Chamber of Commerce, Nancy Creed. I also tried to invite members of the Economic Development Department, Tim Sheehan, and also Brian Connor. And the other folks that I invited to this meeting were the Basketball Hall of Fame, which we have representation. And also we have Nancy, I believe. I seen her coming in or she came in. I think Nancy's here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to have a really, a great discussion on, you know, what this means and kind of the impact so we can be better stewards of the information aside from what was a press release. So nonetheless, I'm gonna let my colleagues from my subcommittee introduce themselves. Mike, did you start with yourself?
Mike Fenton, City Council, Ward Two, Member of the Economic Development Committee.
All right. Marcus, if you want to introduce yourself, sir?
Marcus Williams, Springfield City Councilor for Ward Five, also member of the subcommittee.
All right. We have joining us around the table Jesse Letterman, if you want to introduce yourself for the record.
Jesse Letterman.
All right. Mr. Tim Allen from Ward Seven.
Hi, everybody. Tim Allen, City Councilor representing Ward Seven. I'm not on the committee, but I'm interested in the issue.
All right. We have Victor Davila, if you want to introduce yourself, and then Tracy Whitfield.
Good afternoon, everybody. City Councilor Victor Davila, Ward Six, joining in just to listen to this.
Tracy Whitfield, Springfield City Councilor at Large, also interested in keeping support for our local businesses locally.
All right. Fantastic. I want to thank all my colleagues for being here and outside of my colleagues in the Springfield City Council. We have Nancy Creed, if you can, for the record. Nancy, if you can introduce yourself and the organization you're representing.
Sure. Nancy Creed, President of the Springfield Regional Chamber.
Thank you so much. We have Lisa on the call. Lisa, if you can introduce yourself.
Lisa Cronella. I'm the General Manager of the Hilton Garden Inn.
All right. Thank you for being here. Also, we have members of the media, Paul Tuchel, and we have Focus Springfield. Thank you Focus Springfield for having us. And I'm gonna open it up to our honored guest, our friend, John Deliva from the Basketball Hall of Fame that's here joining us. And my first question, Mr. Deliva, is just, can you just give us a brief summary on how you guys came to this decision? And what was the reason why you came to this decision of moving the enshrinement for this year only?
Sure. So I want to emphasize, thank you for having me, first of all. I'm glad to be here. I want to emphasize this is a one-year COVID-related, COVID-driven issue. If you think back, if you're a sports fan, don't have to think back too far, but you think about the NBA bubble that's happening in Orlando. And then you compare that to what's happening with Major League Baseball where they are traveling from city to city. They are moving from ballpark to ballpark. They are moving from different hotels to different hotels. They're getting different services from different places as. The difference is the NBA bubble is working and the Major League Baseball program is not working. And we looked at the opportunity to host this in Springfield, given the umbrella of COVID, and determined that the infrastructure that we have here unfortunately cannot support this event in the near term. But we did find opportunity with Mohegan Sun, which has provided a bubble opportunity where people arrive, they have a hotel, they have an arena, they have all their meeting space. And Mohegan Sun has provided that all of the people that are working on our event, and I go into more detail on this, will be staying at the hotel for the period of time, so they are inside the bubble. The reason this is important to the Hall of Fame is this is our largest annual fundraiser. And that's very important for us to be a thriving institution in the city of Springfield, to be really involved in tourism and being an anchor tourism attraction in Springfield. We need to be economically solvent. And if we can't have an enshrinement in the near term, then we, this greatly affects our ability to be a strong regional partner in the community. So it is based on best practices, protocols, having a facility where the meeting space is about three and a half times what we have here in Springfield. It's in a bubble. It's a one-time thing, and it provides an opportunity for the Hall of Fame to have this happening and give us the financial security in this COVID time to go forward and be a strong participant as we go forward.
Thank you so much. I honestly want to hear from any of my colleagues, if you have any questions for Mr. Deliva or anything, any kind of statement, anything you would like to share. I'll look into your hands in the queue and look into if anybody has anything at all to discuss with Mr. Deliva before I go on. All right. So I'm gonna go on to Ms. Nancy Creed. Nancy, my question is, what kind of impact or hardship do you think that this would bring to our local economy, the Basketball Hall of Fame move? And I know that COVID-19 has been very extraordinary. I know that there's been tremendous amounts of shortfall when it comes to small business. And we know that, me personally being the Ward One representative, how important the enshrinement is to my district when the enshrinement does happen. What do you foresee or in the chamber, what are the conversations once we receive this news that you guys believe, you know, what is your opinion on this, Miss Creed?
Thank you and thank you for inviting me. I think everyone is disappointed. That's just a natural reaction. But when we look at the challenges that our business community is facing, we would rather have an anchor institution, Hall of Fame here long-term to continue to drive our recovery. Everyone is facing economic hardships that is across the board, big and small. But our nonprofit sector is actually, and I would consider the Hall of Fame to truly be a nonprofit. They're doing the same things that every other business, profit-for-profit are doing, which is downsizing, furloughing, laying people off in order to stay alive. So I think we are looking long-term to make sure that they are here in the future so that we can continue to thrive and build our recovery plan.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, no problem. We have a question from Mr. Fenton. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't raise my hand because I'm on my cell phone, so I can't do it in the app. Thank you. Appreciate that, John and Nancy. I want to start by saying that I'd like to thank the Hall of Fame for their recent multimillion-dollar investment into the site in Springfield. Had a chance to see small peaks of it myself, and it really is a tremendous facelift for an organization that's critical to the economic development future of the city. I share Nancy's sentiments. We're thrilled to hear that in the long run. The Hall of Fame remains committed to having enshrinement in the city of Springfield. And I'm also disappointed that we can't do it here this year. With all that said, I just have two questions, and they're both for Mr. Deliva. John, you mentioned that Mohegan Sun is a bubble. That's really hard to envision how a casino is a bubble, especially given all the conversations that I've had with MGM and the Massachusetts Gaming Commission around the protocols that we have in place for their phased reopening plan. So number one, can you tell us a little bit more about how Mohegan Sun has created a bubble atmosphere for you? And number two, can you tell us a little bit about whether or not you reached out to the Mass Mutual Center or to MGM to see if they could replicate that same bubble experience?
So to answer your first question, your second question first, we have been in constant communication with the Mass Mutual Center, and you may or may not know where they are in their protocols right now. At this current point, as I understand it, they are writing a plan that is going to be submitted to the MCCA. It has not been at this point. That would then be aggregated with all of the facilities that the MCCA has. They would then take that and make a program for all of their different facilities around the state, get it up to Lieutenant Governor's Office. And from what I understand, I'm not sure about this, it might have to go through the legislature for approval. We definitely, and certainly you can, you're welcome, we have had conversations with the folks at the Mass Mutual Center. And right now, well, not right now, but we made determination that between now and the period of time we're having this event, it would not be, would not be able to do that. You've got differences in the size of the arena. You've got social distancing maps. The number of people that would be allowed in the Mass Mutual Center with social distancing at this point would be nowhere near the accommodations that we have. Mohegan Sun has 180,000 square feet of convention space for social distancing. The Mass Mutual Center has about 55,000. The Mohegan Sun, and I hate to do, I had a conversation with Mr. Gomez earlier this week. I don't want to do an advertisement for Mohegan Sun, but as I'm asked for this, I will have to lay out these protocols. Literally, we are, Mohegan Sun is cooperating with us to pick up individuals at the airport, whether they fly privately or they fly commercially. They are providing individual cars that are sanitized between trips back and forth to Mohegan Sun. They are temperature-checked before they get into the car. They are brought into a separate entrance at Mohegan Sun. And of course, Mohegan Sun is a hotel, meeting room, and arena, all in one facility. They are brought into the lobby. They have a human, humanless check-in, if you will. They are, again, temperature-checked. They are given a COVID-19 quick test. They are put into a side room, and as soon as they are cleared, they are directed to a bank of elevators that is dedicated only to our group. They are put into a number of hotel stories, number of hotel levels that are only for our group. They are led through the back of the house, if you will, to many of the events. Mohegan Sun has a protocol that is very deep in terms of, in terms of the engineering that they have, all sorts of protocols in terms of sanitation, in the air, in space, how they sanitize their space. There's, you know, it's very, it's a little bit different than Springfield because there is no hotel attached to the convention center, and the meeting space cannot accommodate the number of people that we need. And I hope that answers your question. It's a different kind of environment.
Yeah. Well, I very much appreciate you sharing that. And I think it's important that the public hear that information. And, you know, that this is really a decision that you have to make based on the pandemic and the empirical differences that exist between the two venues. So I appreciate you highlighting that. I think it puts it certainly in a new light for me. And thank you for participating and your commitment.
Thank you. And I will also say that we have, we are committed to 2021. We have spoken to the Mass Mutual Center about reserving dates, and those dates are on the calendar in September of 2021. I believe we've also had conversations with some or if not all of the hotels about those dates as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. In the queue, I'm gonna let my members of the committee go first. We have Marcus Williams, and after Marcus Williams, we have Victor Davila. Thank you.
Hey, John and Nancy. Thanks for joining. My question is just for you, and it's a question around kind of the businesses that are, you know, certainly going to lose some revenue around this time. The enshrinement, I know, especially for some of the more like urban clubs, for example, they really thrive off this event, and it actually generates a good number, a good dollar amount for those particular locations, as well as restaurants and the brick and mortar as well. So I was just wondering, I mean, in your discussions, just kind of outside of this particular event, has there been any, I guess, interest generated around events that might come to Springfield outside of the enshrinement that might make up for some of this lost revenue for this one particular event for fiscal year 2021?
It's a good question. I mean, under the umbrella of COVID, we're all kind of operating on a survival mode, right? So we've got to get through 2020. I told my staff, you know, 2020 is survival, 2021 is stabilization, and 2022, we can get back to thriving. We try to bring as many events as we possibly can to Springfield. I think the Hoopaw Classic is a great example of that, not one that necessarily would have a lot of social events around, but bringing the best high school players to Springfield College for five days over Martin Luther King Weekend, bringing ESPN to do nine, you know, nine games of programming and many other media sites that are bringing programming. And we want to bring more programming to Springfield. This event, believe me, today, by the way, by the way, today would have been the first day of enshrinement without COVID, right here in Springfield. And I would want nothing more than to be without COVID. I would like to have my new museum opened up in May with thousands of people going through. We're operating right now at about 35% level that we should be versus prior. I would like more than enshrinement to kick off today here in Springfield, but that just can't happen. So always have a focus on Springfield. You know, I was quoted as saying, you know, we're never going to take enshrinement out of Springfield. I guess I should have said, with the exception of a worldwide pandemic, fixated on coming back. I think as Counselor Fenton said, you know, you need no more proof, I don't think, than $20 million of investment into our museum for the long haul. We have entirely new museum. It's entirely, it was entirely done with private money, and 90% of that was from outside Springfield community in the basketball community. So we're here for the long haul. I think as Nancy said, we all got to think about the long-term, and the Hall of Fame is here for the long-term. We want to grow our business here in Springfield. We're committed to that. But this, this event is so very important for us to get to that point in late '21 or early 2022, when we can all get back to business.
And just to end, John, I appreciate that your comments around that. I mean, I just think that, you know, since you're here for the long haul, I think there's some missed opportunities in regard to the networking that we can be going around, you know, some of the night event activities that take place. And when enshrinement comes to town, I'm telling you that I've met with a lot of folks along the Worthington Corridor, folks who run businesses there that say that enshrinement is, you know, it's a peak for them, like, you know, the Holyoke St. Patrick Parade is big for Holyoke, for example. You know, significant event. If there's any opportunities to just kind of join forces or sit at a table together to discuss ideas, I think that would be pretty, pretty significant as well for the community. So I just wanted to offer that.
Well, no, I would welcome you or anyone else to come in as a group and have a conversation about that. I mean, there are opportunities. It comes with some modest cost, but to have a periodic Hall of Famer attendance at an event downtown is developed by the bid, for instance, or in that corridor. I mean, we're always open to ideas. It doesn't have to be a huge, big event that is focused on generating interest in a certain community.
Appreciate that, John. Thank you. I'll circle back.
Thank you, Marcus, for your questions. I just wanted to just add a little bit of, not always the bid could be the organization that we do work with. I have trust in, I love the bid, but, you know, just a little bit more outside institutions, community-oriented is what I think Marcus is trying to allude to. Chris Russell does a fantastic job in Ward One, which is my district. We just, you know, I think that was a great idea, Marcus, and I just wanted to second that, amplify that a little bit more. The next one up, we had Counselor Victor Davila. And then after, we have two more hands in the queue, which are Mr. Tim Allen, and then after would be Jesse Letterman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear you okay?
Yes.
Yes. He seems to be going on out with the audio, so if I lose you, that's what it is. John, thank you for being here today. I could ask some brief questions, but first, I think that's important to recognize that this is not only an economic impact for the city and losing revenue at this critical moment, or economics of the economy of the city, but also the sense of pride. You know, Springfield is a birthplace of basketball, so it's a pride issue as well. So going to my question, John, can you tell me what the projected loss of revenue might be for the area?
For the overall economic impact?
Correct.
So we have estimated in the past that the economic impact of Springfield is four to $5 million overall between the hotels, food service, the travel, the, you know, all of those things. So, and that is obviously in a non-COVID timeframe.
Right.
So, so again, this was not a decision that we made in a cavalier sense. This was a decision that we made to have an event that provided revenue to the Hall of Fame to be able to think about the long-term. I understand the pride. We've been, we've been here for a long, long time. We've been, we've been pretty successful and productive. We've had a lot of events. We've had a lot of enshrinements. We've provided a lot of economic opportunity for the community. And I would ask that in this very specific, difficult time, that people take a step back and see that this is something that we have to do to assure the fact that we can go forward in the future economically viable and come out of this with our $20 million of investment in the museum, with the $4 million we spent on the outside dome to fix the roof, with the many things that we do in the community. So I would ask that if people do take that step back, no one has more pride in, you know, the Hall of Fame being in Springfield and me and my staff and the people that love basketball in this community. I understand that. It's just not about, we're not dissing the community. We are having an event that allows us to frankly weather this storm and come out roughly on the other end.
Right. So, John, just, so my second last question is, and of course, the Basketball Hall of Fame, the fiscal structure, it's a staple, the community is iconic. You know, when I go away and come back, I know I'm home when I see the basketball room. So it's $4 or $5 million impact for the city in lost revenue. I understand the other aspect, which is critical as well, the long-term fiscal stability of the Basketball Hall of Fame. You talked about baseball not having infrastructure. How many people are you projecting that you're going to be able to fit in at the Mohegan Sun? And why can't we do that here in Springfield, say, for example, outside somewhere?
Okay. Yep. Okay. So you are breaking up to me at least. I'm not sure about other people, but I think your question, the last part of your question was how many people at Mohegan Sun, and why couldn't we replicate that here in Springfield, even with?
Outside, on the outside, go outside.
Outside tenting and things like that. So the bubble environment is very important. I think if you do outside tents, and if you were in Springfield, we'd have to do, at our peak night, we would have to do at least three, maybe four hotels in Springfield just because of the individual hotel capacities. That would mean that somehow we have a, almost like a gerbil trail put out to the different hotels, and that has to be secured. It has to be, you know, safe. It has to be, all the protocols have to be in there. The numbers in terms of how many people would be able to attend enshrinement in Symphony Hall, which was a beautiful space to have it, certainly not a social distancing space, but a beautiful space to have it, that would hold about 2,300 people at max. We, before COVID, before COVID, we had 2,200 tickets sold. Social distancing in Mass Mutual Center would at best be 1,500, probably closer to 1,200. And again, I don't want to harp on the, on the protocol issues, but there's not a detailed set of protocols there. Mohegan Sun has an arena that is 10,200. We have a cat cam drawing from them on social distancing that allows us to have the 2,400 that we need at this point and all the protocols behind the scene. I do not see that we could do a outside event and keep people secure and safe and kind of in a protective bubble. The expense would be one question. I mean, it would be an enormous expense to do that. But we have the opportunity in this one time to go to this one location where we can have this event and then go back to Springfield in 2021.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Tim Allen, you're next, and then after Jesse Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hi, John. Got a few questions, just kind of getting straight on the events and the dates. I know that normally in the last couple of years, enshrinement has been like the second weekend of September after Labor Day and before the Big E. And this year, it was going to be this weekend, the last weekend of August.
Yeah. So, so if you remember, this year was an Olympic year. That's been delayed till 2021. And every time there's an Olympic year, Tim, there is a little bit of a juggling of the calendar with the media and other things. So sometimes we have to react to that. So obviously, Olympics were pushed off. I mean, everything's been upset, right? But that's, that's why sometimes it will ebb and flow, but the normal home for it is the weekend after Labor Day.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the case next? So, so just in general, what you're doing is taking the 2020 enshrinement, moving it to May of '21, and then you're still going to go forward with a 2021 enshrinement at, you know, in September of '21? So there'll be two enshrinements in three or four months?
Yes. And obviously, you know, you'd say, whoa, how's that going to work? But the classes are different. The attendees are different. The support from different NBA teams is different because Hall of Famers come and colleges come from all different places. So the, really, the audience kind of rewinds because who the class is made up of is a bunch of different people. So next year, for example, Paul Pierce is a headliner. It's going to be a great class. It's not a diminished class. And so, so we fully expect to have the same kind of economic impact that we would have. And I'll tell you, in the future, I mean, things with the modern era of the NBA and of, of the NBA and the, and the media that, that, that the NBA and college basketball has, enshrines are only going to get bigger. So in the future, um, you know, this is, this is a, this is a good property for Springfield to have. And again, I, I apologize that I have to ask for people's patience this year, but we have to get through this year, make, make sure this organization survives so that we can look forward and, and, and grow.
Okay. Um, so just, um, oh, good answers. Good, good conversation. Um, I'm wondering, so you've kind of made the assumption that COVID is still going to be an issue in May of 21, therefore the decision for Mohegan Sun. What confidence do you have or what are the decision dates for September of 21, where you are, uh, are hopefully making a decision? It sounds like coming back to Springfield for that, the COVID won't be an issue at that point. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Of course, it's anyone's guess, right? So I'll, I'll throw it back to you. When, when will this all be over? We don't know. We're going to assume in September of 2021 that we're going to the National Center, which will allow, um, you know, for their formal protocols to be set and their social distancing to be, um, laid out, which right now isn't done yet. We think it, we think the numbers will increase a little bit once they've done their complete review of that. We're going to assume that there is some sort of vaccine um, in place around the first of the year, uh, first quarter of the year. Uh, we are going to assume that social distancing, uh, maybe it's not a, a 25 or 50% capacity. It might be higher, but no one knows, right? But right now, our plan is to come back to Springfield in September of 2021 for enshrinement.
All right. Right. And yeah, so, so really there's some action items for, uh, the Mass Mutual Center. I'm not sure I'm saying MCCA or whatever, in order for them to give you information that says, that would meet your criteria for being back here in September.
Well, so I'm glad you said that because, um, so one of the questions I, I would ask if I was in your shoes was what can this council do? What can the Economic Development Council do from the Springfield, um, City Council? And so it's, it's not so much, um, not that your questions are punitive. Don't be punitive of the Mass Mutual Center. How can we help? How can the Springfield City Council help? How can the businesses, uh, help, uh, the MCCA and the Mass Mutual Center plan for an event like this, but more so events like, uh, regular conventions? If this city had, uh, 200 conventions in the last half of 2021, going into 2022, that 12-month period, 200 conventions of 50 to 200 people, and we were prepared for that, we're a, we're a B-size city, which, which i- is a great target for, for those kind of conventions to come back early. What are we doing as a community? What are we doing as an economic development group? What are we doing as business people to make sure that the MCCA and, and the Mass Mutual Center are prepared? What are we doing in the downtown hotels to make sure that we are positioning ourselves the best for that? That, that's one of the things that I really wanted to say to this committee is, you know, there is an opportunity for economic development in downtown Springfield. Let's make sure that not only can we come back here in 2021, which we are going to do, but what can we do to build that business in the longer term? And, and so the convention center obviously has a part of that in this city, and the community needs to embrace that and help them be successful.
No, that's a really good point. That's why I asked that, that line of questioning. So, so we're ready for not just you guys in September 2021, but, but anything else that's, that could be in, at risk of le- leaving because of, because of that. Um, I, I guess my last question, I don't mean to be punitive, but just like, what are the action steps that we could take? Maybe a follow-up meeting with them or something like that, uh, Mr. Chair. But my last question is, uh, the hoop hall. In January 2021, uh, is that, where does that stand? That's a, you know, a bunch of people in Springfield College Arena, you know, certainly not social distanced, et cetera. Do you have any update on that? There's a great, obviously it's a fabulous, uh, event and?
Yes, it's, it is a great event. Thank you for mentioning that. That is an event, if you're not familiar with it, it's over Martin Luther King Weekend. It's at, uh, Blake Arena in Springfield. We bring in the best, uh, boys and girls teams from around the country. I mean, Bronny James was, was here last year. He'll be there. He'll be here over the next couple of years as well. He's only the freshman going into being a sophomore year. We're evaluating that now with Springfield College. Um, you know, it's, it's at risk. Um, and, and, and so I don't know if that happens later in the year. We've got to look at what the high school calendar looks like. It's a very important event, not only for the Hall of Fame, um, but obviously our relationship with Springfield, the community to, to, um, produce this kind of event. As I said before, you know, nine or 10 games on ESPN. We've, we've got, uh, LeBron was there last year watching his son play. We've had so many D1 coaches come to Springfield. It builds a relationship with so many people in the basketball community with the Hall of Fame. Um, and it really gets down to the grassroots, what the game was really all about from James Naismith's standpoint. So we are evaluating that meeting with Springfield College. It's, 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 you know, it's a blinking yellow light right now, frankly.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for your honesty and clarity in your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Um, Mr. Letterman, Council Letterman, you may.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and for calling this meeting, and John and Nancy, another guest. Thank you, uh, for being here with us. Most of my questions at this point have been asked and answered by our colleagues. I think we're all leaving here knowing a lot more than, uh, I think, uh, very important. You know, I, I myself was, uh, you know, really surprised and disappointed, as I think many were, uh, with the announcement. You know, just coincidentally, I happen to be participating in this meeting, uh, from my car. I was, I was, I stopped and dropped something off at my mother's house, which is on the corner of Bay and Clarendon, where I grew up, which is a block from, of course, you know, where the first game of basketball was played at the former YMCA on State Street. So, uh, you know, it'll be disappointing to see a byline that reads, you know, Connecticut, uh, instead of Springfield, Massachusetts. And I think it was really important for this meeting to be held so that, uh, the public and the business community could get a little bit more clarity, as well as ourselves into, uh, how the decision was made and also what the future looks like, um, in terms of, you know, the, the work that needs to be done to rebuild not only enshrinement events in Springfield, but also our, our general downtown economy, uh, and citywide economy as well. So, you know, I think if, if there was one thing to add, I think it would be, you know, mainly that I do wish there was a way, um, that we could have perhaps replicated, uh, some of the practices, uh, that are being discussed that are going to happen down in Mohegan. I guess the sort of big question is around the arena size. Not quite sure there really is something that we could have done, uh, with regard to that, you know, in, in the amount of time that we have. But, uh, you know, I, I, I do wish there could have been something worked out. And I suppose the only other thing I would say is certainly, you know, we're committed, uh, to supporting the, the downtown business community and, and citywide around, uh, some of the suggestions that have been made. And I'm sure, uh, you know, we would welcome folks to reach out to us to let us know how we can continue to support those types of efforts going forward. And also perhaps, you know, I don't know how much communication really occurred, uh, with the administration or with the chairman or Tim Sheehan specifically, um, before the announcement was made, but, you know, it would be, uh, helpful to have known some of what was discussed today. You know, seeing as, you know, oftentimes we get sort of inundated, rightfully so, with, with calls and questions around these issues and, um, takes us a little while to get a meeting like this on the books so that we can get all the information. So, you know, working on that communication between, uh, the branches of government and, and the business community as well, so that, uh, we might be able to provide that information when we're reached out to, I think would be positive. But, um, certainly it's a, it's a really tough economic time for all industries, um, including the tourism industry, the restaurant industry. Um, I think people were, you know, thinking of enshrinement, you know, in the future as something to, uh, help give a shot in the arm. And hopefully, uh, the September 2021 will be able to do that. Uh, but I, I do appreciate it. As I said, I think we're all leaving here knowing more than we did when we came in, which is good. And hopefully we can work together, uh, to try to alleviate some of the stress that we know is continuing to build.
Yeah, no question. Thank you for those comments. And I, I would say, um, again, from the economic development standpoint, um, having Nancy here from the, um, from the Chamber of Commerce is great, but I would encourage the group who wants to look at building conventions and, and downtown traffic with the Mass Mutual Center. There's so much opportunity there to also engage Mary, Mary Kay Wiedra at the, uh, at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Greater Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, you know, she is fixated on that. That's, that's, that's really a, a, a key of her growth strategy. And right now, we just, we really need to focus on that. It's a game changer. If you can get 150 to 200 small conventions in Springfield, you'll see a lot of people on the street. You'll see a lot of people in the restaurants. You'll see a lot of people in the, um, and we will do our part from the Hall of Fame standpoint to bring larger events here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Delevingne. We, we can, um, have another economic development on that specific point, which, um, it's duly noted and, and I can appreciate that advice. Um, Tracy Whitfield, you have had your hands up in the queue. Um, I got you. I kept on putting it down because I seen it and you were next. So, uh, Council Whitfield, um, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Gomez. I kept putting it back up because I didn't know what was happening.
I got you. I got you.
Mr. John, um, I echo the same sentiments as my colleagues, but I appreciate, um, the fact that you looked for an alternative to remain viable for our city so that when you do come back in the future, well, next year, we're not even going to say the future, but when you come back next year, you know, you, you have the resources to do so because otherwise it could be detrimental for, um, the Hall of Fame. And I'm, I'm also, you know, it's a scary time right now, and Springfield is in the green with COVID, um, 19 cases. And I just read an article that, um, there was a, a family in, in Rhode Island that had a wedding, and every single person came back, tested positive for COVID-19. And I think the wedding was over the 50, um, people guidelines that we have. And so the, the, um, wedding party got fined $10,000. So I, I really appreciate your efforts on keeping the, um, the convention going safely and keeping, uh, our community safe as well. I mean, that's an aspect that everyone have to look at as well. It's not just about the economic development coming to Springfield, but it's also about keeping our community healthy and safe. So thank you for the hard work. Thank you for committing to come back and already starting the planning for that. And, um, I just wanted to throw that point out, and I just appreciate all that you're doing to stay viable for the city of Springfield.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Council Whitfield. So now that most of the counselors have asked their questions, I know we have, uh, members of the community. If there's anything you would like to add before I close out, because we're going to be punctual and try to close this out within, uh, four, before 4:30, so we can stay right into our timeframe of an hour for this meeting. I know we have a member of the community or a business community. I'm not sure if they're still here. I do not, oh, no, I do see her. Her name is Lisa. Lisa, um, from Garden. And you, you, uh, you seem to have, uh, been part of the hotel industry. Is there anything that you would like to add?
Uh, no, uh, again, this was great information. I, I just think I wanted to know, um, my question was, who was involved in the decision, John? It was the Board of Directors? Was it the NBA? Was it, um, again, uh, as we all are very disappointed, and it, just the communication to find out over mass live when we have a, a fantastic relationship. I, I just wondered again if you could answer that question for me.
So the analysis was done over a long period of time. We've been working with the Mass Mutual Center, oh, probably since, uh, probably since the beginning of COVID, uh, to figure this out. And it was made, uh, by, uh, staff recommendations, myself, meeting with our executive committee, which is made up of a number of basketball people, Hall of Famers, and NBA people. So it was, uh, kind of that big picture look.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I want to, um, if there's any more questions, um, I just wanted to add and say that, um, I'm very thankful for, um, Mr. Delevingne, all of my members of the subcommittee that were all present. I want to thank you, Lisa, for, uh, being part of the hotel industry, at least, for joining us on this meeting and the rest of my colleagues. A lot of, uh, great questions. Uh, the intent of this meeting was to open the discussion and the dialogue, so that we can better be stewards and, and with the information that was given, um, post, uh, sometimes when we catch things on the media and we don't know if the administration, uh, was advised. And I really wanted to, uh, see if, uh, our Economic Development Department could have joined us. Maybe we can have a follow-up meeting, um, more into September. Um, I, I just, uh, truly, uh, anticipating that hopefully we can get COVID-19 in, in, in control by, uh, hopefully January. Um, we, we, we know that we need a vaccine. We can't thrive without really tackling the vaccine. Uh, today, uh, I was at a press conference where most of my co-, uh, uh, but, um, some of my colleagues were, that when, uh, the governor told us that Springfield is green, which green is good, that our numbers are solid, that we look like we're flattening the curve. So, um, essentially if it turns out that we become this green zone, um, and we start, uh, doing great and flattening the curve in this area and within New England, um, just in that perspective of, of, of making sure or making, making it clear that, you know, maybe it could come back. But, you know, just to hear that, even though that you guys are moving it for that one time only, I know that members of my community are, i- it's not a secret. Everybody's hurt by the death of Kobe Bryant. And Kobe being, uh, inducted and, uh, the also members of this enshrinement team that are coming in, uh, they're big names. And, you know, everybody, especially Springfield, knowingly that a lot of support came from the West Side and the, the, the West Side. And, and this was a chance for basically the eastern part of the United States to probably come to Springfield and really remember, um, the great Kobe Bryant and the rest of the, uh, inductees. Um, I'm really, uh, I'm going to be honest. I'm really impressed with the, the analysis. Uh, I know that you, uh, drive a, a, a great ship over there, Mr. Delevingne. And I think members of our commu-, uh, our, our community, you know, were just kind of heartbroken with the fact that they found out, uh, during, you know, pandemic that they thought this was going to, this was going to happen. It was like during this time when people are feeling down and out, and obviously with the loss of, uh, uh, of Kobe, uh, the induction ceremony, you know, it's big. It's, it, it, it's going to be, like you said, these, these next couple of years are going to be very, very big. And people were scared to see that maybe if it happened just one time, that it can have inevitably happen again and over and over again. But you coming to, uh, to this meeting and clearing that up and making sure that people know that Springfield's, uh, enshrinement is going to stay in Springfield, that this is only for a short time period, is important. And, um, I'm really thankful for you being candid with us. And, and I know that in our discussions from before, we, like you said, we didn't want to give, uh, the floor to, to your, to, to your sponsors, uh, but it, it is something that us as a council have to look at when it comes to what we have here and how we can help those, uh, that are here in Springfield. Uh, uh, we can make sure that they're, um, they have all the resources they have, they need, so then you guys can, uh, realistically move it forward, don't have to move anywhere else. But with that being said, um, if there's any more, if there's not any more questions, I want to thank my members of the committee. I want to thank the community, the focus Springfield. I want to thank all the members and you, uh, Mr. Delevingne, for making sure that basketball stays home. Um, with that being said, uh, with, with, with no objection, I close this meeting. Oh, I apologize. Before I close it, before I close it, I guess I have one more hand in the queue. I apologize. Um, Mr. Davila, you have the floor, and then I will close the meeting after Mr. Davila's comment. Council Davila.
I do not.
Yeah, I can hear you now, sir.
Yeah. Uh, my apologies. I was muted. Uh, I have more of a comment. Uh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for doing this, uh, very informative meeting. Uh, I walked out of this meeting with more information than I had before. And John, thank you for, for this, so I never recall, and looking at the long term, like, uh, and the stability of the Basketball Hall of Fame and division. Uh, however, I want to emphasize, Mr. Chair, that I do believe, I heard John say, you know, this is a good location, that we should, uh, not only have a meeting, which I, you alluded we will, uh, but also to, for the community, for the city council, uh, who are most interested to proactive to start working with the Mass Mutual Center, with the administration, to ensure that we start turning down for the, for September. Uh, next year, because I'm sure that's going to be open very quickly. We have too many variables that's considered. And I have heard before, uh, that realistically, this, we may go for the January of 2022. Uh, if that's the case, we're going to do the same ballpark at this time, at this year. And I just don't think that we can afford to lose again, $400 million unless we have, so call me, Mr. President, to help in whatever I can. And again, uh, thank you to John for, for especially, uh, information.
All right. Thank, thank.
I, I've got to apologize. I, I, I couldn't hear, uh, Mr. Davila. I couldn't understand what he said, so I don't know if there's something for me to respond to.
Not necessarily. I think what I did hear is that there's a points taken that, Mr. Davila, that you had brought up, that us as a council are, are willing to stand, stand up. that us as a council are willing to stand, stand up fast. If there's somebody on the call that needs to mute their phone, can you please do that? Because we have a lot of feedback. We're trying to close this meeting as fast as possible, and it's been very disruptive. Thank you so much. I don't, I don't know who it was, but moving forward, Mr. Davila, I, I, Mr. Davila, and Mr. Davila. It's funny. Delevingne, we are making sure that we want to have a follow-up meeting with economic development specific to the things that you had brought up in the meeting when it comes to procedures, protocols and efforts, and seeing what we can do as a council to help what's here and, and specifically to the Mass Mutual Center. And also, you know, just to open the discussion a little bit more on the, on those efforts when it comes to conventions, which we, we have had those discussions in the past. And, and I'm pretty sure that our, our department is really looking forward to making sure that we're bringing back that renaissance that we've already all invested in specifically to the downtown district. But with that, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Delevingne, Mr. Davila. Thank you for your comments and all the rest of my colleagues. If there's anything you would like to add, Mr. Delevingne, before I, I close this meeting out, I'll give you the last word and then I will close this.
No, I just want to say thank you. Great questions. I'm glad we could kind of clear the air a little bit here. I, we're as interested as the Economic Development Group is in, in terms of getting more conventions here to Springfield. So please include us in any conversations. And Marcus, if you would reach out to me, I'd like to have a conversation with you about, you know, some of the ideas that you might have for, you know, what, what you talked about. There, there are opportunities, it may not be in the short run because of COVID, but in the long run, that something we can do on a regular basis as we go forward. So thank you. Your support of the Hall of Fame, we appreciate it.
All right. I call this meeting adjourned. All of you have a great weekend. Make sure you vote early. Make sure you get out September 1st. All of you have a blessed one. Bye-bye.
Thank you.